Good evening. Welcome to the Fairmont School Board meeting. It is Tuesday, April 24, 2018. Roll call is all present except Nicole. Please join me in the Aplauding Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has anyone reviewed the minutes from last time?
I haven't. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as offered.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the agenda, we have a green agenda with a few additions.
I move to approve the green agenda, April 24, 2018, school board meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And the agenda's approved, and we have celebrations.
First of all, we have recognition of some individuals that have been with our district now for 25 years. And so I'm going to call these folks up that are here. I'm going to read a little bit about them. I think we have one or more that may want to say something. Maybe only one, okay? First of all, we have Sheila Sapola. Sheila, why don't you come up? Sheila serves as a Title I aide at Fairmont Elementary. She started her employment at Bud and Lincoln Schools and worked with most of the third and fourth grade teachers, but primarily with Heidi Lumen. For the past three years, Sheila has worked with kindergarten students. Sheila has also served as a food service employee for seven of her 25 years. Sheila has three grown sons. Dan and Dave live in Golden Valley, and Andy is in Fairmont. Sheila's outside interests include reading, golfing, knitting, and crocheting. Do I say anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right.
Although I have enjoyed my job immensely, I love working with the kids. Sorry. I said, I really like working with the kids. That's a best, it's gotta be the best job ever. Love it.
And we do have great kids.
We do.
We really do. I'm serious.
Yes, and we make them better.
We do. We do. And they make us better, too.
Yes, they do.
Okay. We have Jean Morris. Jean is a longtime bus driver for the school district, but when she's not driving bus, she is volunteering in our schools. She helps with sewing lessons in the high school family consumer science class, assists with copy and projects for third grade math, and helps out with the first grade red-hot reading program. Jean and her husband Ron have three grown children, Michelle, Wendy, and Justin. The love of Jean and Ron's hearts are their four granddaughters and two grandsons. Jean's hobbies include camping with children and grandchildren, quilting, and taking many vacations. Jean Morris.
Yes.
Well, there you are.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I thoroughly enjoy driving my little nice children around, so.
And I know that it's right, Jean's bus are well behaved.
Because I make them.
Because she makes them. That is correct. Terry Bear. Over the years, Terry has served as a Title I aide for Mrs. Foster, Forster, Mr. Wells, Mrs. Egan, and Mrs. Ocasus. She has been active in and outside of the classroom, assisting with class plays, writing on parade floats in support of education, working with groups on and off stage at partner association variety shows, and helping with family fun fairs. Terry and her husband David have three grown sons, Ryan, Kyle, and Tyler. Each are married, six grandchildren in total so far. In her spare time, Terry enjoys making cards and scrapbooking, camping and hiking, and reading, and spending time with her children and grandchildren. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for my clock. That was really nice of all of you. And I think back of my memories of 25 years, I just have three hours' worth at least. No, I'm teasing. Maybe a minute. The greatest thrill for me as a Title I aide is seeing the children that I work with improve in their reading and math skills. Recently, I was testing the second grade students in Mrs. Ocasus's class on the Fast Bridge A reading, where they do a one-minute read with me on the iPad. We do this in the fall, and the winter, and the spring. And the students and I looked at their scores and how they had improved from the fall until now. It was a great moment to see how excited they were at how they had improved, and it was exciting for me as well. I've also enjoyed working with several different teachers through the years, and we have some really great teachers. Some very special memories have been students who made me cards for my birthday at the end of the school year, or just recently I had surgery, and the students in Mrs. Ocasus's class made me get well cards. I treasured those cards and have saved them through the years. Twenty-five years' worth of cards. And last, it's been a real joy for me when different students who I worked with way back in third and fourth grade, when that was with Mrs. Egan, they've sent me an invitation to their graduation open house. I must admit, I feel really old, but at the same time, this has been so very special to me to be invited to their open houses. So I want to thank everyone who worked so tirelessly with the students here and at the high school, and I thank you for my clock. Thanks.
Thank you. In fact, you know, the three of you, why don't we get a photo of you three up here? Because the other two folks are not here.
On purpose, probably.
In front of Judy, because she gets a nice shot of you.
If you can stay behind.
Sure, we'll be in there.
You can even hurt him if he wants.
Bethany has served our district as an elementary teacher and is currently teaching fourth grade. She holds a master's degree in education from St. Mary's University. During her 25 years, Bethany has served as a professional learning community leader, a site leader, a teacher mentor, and a student-teacher supervisor. She's been active in staff development, members' rights with Education Minnesota, and has served for several years on the EMF negotiations team. That's Education Minnesota Fair. Bethany and her husband Brad have a son and daughter, Jordan and Natalie. Bethany's hobbies include reading, word games, puzzles, and watching her children's sporting events. And we have Jerry Brooks. Jerry's coaching baseball tonight, but Jerry, there are a few areas in math that Jerry hasn't taught in 25 years. His classroom instruction included pre-algebra, algebra, consumer math, geometry, geometry A and B, advanced placement calculus, computer science, area learning center math, and future aviation. His coaching hats have been equally as diverse, coaching students in baseball head coach, basketball, football, and math league head coach. His professional positions have included head Education Minnesota Fairmont Negotiator, credit union manager, loan officer for Fairmont School employees, and Education Minnesota Fairmont Vice President. Jerry and his wife Heidi have four grown sons, Zach, Casey, Brandon, and Ryan. Outside of school, Jerry enjoys most things associated with sports, flying, and friendly wagers on the golf course. We want to congratulate all five of these folks for their 125 years of service, and I think one thing you find out about Fairmont Area School District employees, regardless of what positions they hold, they're very busy people. They're very busy with family, they're very busy at school, and they have lots of hobbies. They're just heavily engaged in our community, and we certainly appreciate all the good work that they do. Thank you. Next, we are going to honor those teachers that are earning at the end of the year. And this is a very special occasion. Here's how tenure works in Minnesota. If you are a brand-new teacher and you come to the school district in Minnesota, to earn tenure, you have to be in that district for three consecutive years. And then, at the end of the three years, you get tenure. And if you are a Minnesota teacher who has taught for three years and have received tenure, and you relocate to another Minnesota district, you'll only have to then serve one additional year to get tenure. If you come from another state, you, when you come into Minnesota, you have to start tenure all over again. And we take the tenure process seriously. And every week, I meet with all four of the principals, and every week that the team meets, I ask one question of all four of the principals. How are our new teachers doing? And we just go around, and we hear really good reports about how everybody is doing. And so tonight, I'm very pleased to publicly acknowledge that we have four teachers that are going to be earning tenure, and we do have certificates for them. And I'm going to introduce them, and if you each come up individually, hi, Sam. If you each come up individually, and then we'll take a group picture of you holding your certificates. Is that okay? Okay, first of all, we have Mr. Jim Bus. Jim is one of our sixth-grade teachers who specializes in science and is very actively involved in the STEM program. Jennifer Fries. Jennifer is involved in our, I want to say.
Reading interventionist.
Reading interventionist is the title, and I know where she is and what she does. Tiffany Harris. Hi, Tiffany. And Tiffany's involved in our early childhood education program. One of our younger teachers, I'm just kidding, of course, is Kevin Christensen. Kevin came from a neighboring school district and was so honored to have him teaching in the elementary school. Kirsten Rosel is not only a Fairmont grad, but a brand-new mother of a couple of weeks ago. And Kirsten is special ed teacher at the elementary school. April Tortson. April is our elementary nurse at Fairmont Elementary School. And Callie Willie is a secondary language arts teacher at the high school. So let's get ready to move forward here. I didn't just get those people by themselves, because there's so many.
And next, we will move on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items on the calendar coming up. We have a policy committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, May 3, at 4:30 in the afternoon. The community ed advisory council is meeting on Thursday, May 10. And it looks like our staff development curriculum committee is going to be meeting on March, or May 14. So a number of things going on. We did have ACT testing today, too. Ms. Niss, do you want to talk about that for a minute? That was a rescheduled event of our sophomores and juniors because of a snowstorm, and I have not, I don't have any report on how that went.
It went wonderful. And actually, I thank you for giving me this opportunity just to say thank you to our students, our staff, and our community, our parents, and our community. We had so much, so many snacks for our kids that we were able to put the extras out even at the end of the day for our sports kids before they started practices and went to their events. And, you know, the kids came in, they were nervous, they were exhausted by the end of the day, and I think I could say the same for staff. Some of them were proctoring the test for the very first time, and they were just as nervous as the kids. They wanted to make sure that they did it right. And I think our teachers did a great job in preparing the kids, and, you know, it was, it's a big test, and the kids know that, and they want to do their best. So it went out, it was great. It was a great day.
Did anybody call into a classroom this year?
Nobody did.
Well, that's, that's great.
The Freedom of Distraction Plan, we refer to it as the Joe Brown Plan. We made sure that phones were off the hook so nobody could call into the room. So, yeah, no, it was a great, great day, and thank you, guys, for allowing us to have our ninth through 12th graders do a flexible learning day. So we'll be able to take some feedback and, with that, and some data from our teachers to make sure that the students did complete the work as they were supposed to today, and they were given the option to do their work at home, or they were able to come to the school as well. So it was nice to kind of try a day like that, and we'll see how, how that goes once they return tomorrow. So, yeah, it was really a great, great day. Everybody did their part perfectly. So, and thank you to Mary Cole. She's really the person behind all of this. She does all the behind-the-scenes, and she spends hours upon hours upon hours, so to be able to do this for our kids.
And what happened before, we had all the tests ready to go, and then we had the snowstorm, so Mary Cole had to physically collect all the tests back up, send them back to ACT, and they sent us all new tests that had to be, did they have to pull and everything?
Yep, everything redone.
Right, because you can't use the same test.
Because some schools took the test that day, and so then we could not give those tests, so they all had to be sent back to then be resent to us and the whole process over again.
Darn.
Yeah. So we were happy to see this day finally come and that we were able to get it in. And, you know, one other thing, too, that we did this year is we did test all of our students in advanced algebra. And so the reason we did that was hopefully for next year to be able to college in the school's pre-calculus class. But most of our kids qualify for that class by the ACT, so, and normally 10th graders don't take it. So we were able to give them the test today as well. And for our ninth graders who are in advanced algebra, they could not take the test today. They could not take it on a state testing date. They have to take it on the national testing date. So we're going to test them on June 9, along with our state FFA participants. So all kids will have the opportunity to take the test, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, so thank you, guys.
And I see Sam Vieselman's in our audience. Do you have any comments about robotics this year?
I'm great.
It's great. Okay, very good. Well, just, I want to brief the board real quickly, too. I attended a breakfast meeting this morning at 7:30 up in Minneapolis. A couple of weeks ago, I received this magazine at home called Thinking Minnesota, The Vanishing Minnesota Worker. And in this magazine, there was a four-page article written by Catherine Kirsten that said why it's time to hit the reset button on vocational education. And so when I came back to school last Monday, I sent her an email and sent her some news clippings on different things that we're doing here at Fairmont. And they contacted me on Friday and invited me to come and be part of a panel discussion this morning up in Minneapolis with a group of about 80 different business executives and people from the State Department, and to talk about what we're doing, because we're doing the right things here, and we need to replicate, the rest of the state needs to replicate what Fairmont is doing in terms of vocational.
What was the message in that article?
Well, the message is simply that they kind of asked the question, you know, what happened to vocational education? Why did schools cut them? And the fact of the matter is that they're projecting that we need 280,000 additional skilled workers in the next five years. Now, I see Mr. Tredo's in the audience. When Andy and I went and testified a few weeks ago in the legislature, we're quoting 260,000 in the next four years. They're quoting 280,000 in the next five. Very comparable, but that's a lot of people. I mean, that's a lot of people. And a lot of folks are in their 60s and they're baby boomers that are retiring. And the number of people retiring from the skilled workforce, the fact of the matter is, a lot of schools over the years have simply eliminated their vocational programs. Now, I did remind this group today that, you know, didn't want to get too political, but you got to look at the facts. We, in the previous governorship, for six years in a row, we had no additional money. Educational funding was zero, 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 and zero. And then we got a 4%, 4% increase. And then we had the recession of 2008. And during that timeframe, there were many, many faculty that lost their jobs, and we didn't cut math, science, social, and language arts because they're required. We cut the electives. And many schools simply eliminated the vocational programs. And as we know, vocational programs are expensive. It's expensive to set up the labs, and it's hard now to find trained teachers that can teach the vocational area. But there's some good news. I mean, with the Tier One teaching license, we can now hire a faculty member who has five years of experience in the trades. So if you've been a plumber for five years, or an electrician for five years, or a carpenter for five years, you can actually get a teaching license now in Minnesota and teach a vocational class. And, but the point of that story is that I always like to point out that even though Martin County is a very, very, very heavily agricultural area, and we have lots of silos, this is one part of the state, though, that we've eliminated the silos. We've, we've, we work so closely with our teachers, with our schools, with our business, with our manufacturing base, with our governments. We work together here, here in Martin County, and that's something that the state needs to learn. You know, education needs to reach out to business, and business needs to reach out to education. That was kind of the message that I laid today. So I just feel very good about where we are and where we're going, and we got to continue doing this good work. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Finance, financial business, Julie?
Yes, I met with Sue earlier today, and we reviewed the wires and transfers for the April 6 to 19. Nothing really special on there. There's received in the pathway funds, ideas, payments, food service, VP, that stands for voluntary pre-K. It's a prepaid reimbursement for breakfast, MA funds, and then the sales tax was paid out. Then on our check register, there's a couple here I'll bring your attention to. Check number 61039, Courtyard Marriott. This is state FFA convention. That's the convention fees. They went up on Sunday, I believe, and they'll be coming home today. Then a couple down there on Duuar Electric, 61042. This is another payment to the LED lighting project that we have in progress. It's not completed yet, we're still working on that. Then check number 61055, Ingram Library Services. Part of that is media center books, and those were placed at the elementary school. A large portion of that, there's just a little bit, some music books that were on that invoice as well. And 61075, Quaver Music. This is a online K6 music curriculum that's available that we can use for the next seven years, and this will replace textbooks in music, so. And then 20, oops, 61079, SHI International. Large portion of that is five classroom set of Chromebooks to be used in our classrooms, and we're purchasing those here now already this year to get ready and get those ready to go into the classrooms for next year. Just want to make sure we got them all ready to go. We want to make sure we get all the bugs worked out of them. And also, another thing that could also happen is that when other businesses in that purchase, other schools, I mean, they, some things could become a, or not obsolete, but just not available. So we got those in place already, so. And part of that, too, there is $787 of that SHI, that's a PI grant. There were some ear headphones with microphones with it. And then the last one I'll tell you about is right below that, 61080, Speakeasy Music. Believe it or not, prom is this weekend, and so that will be student, that will be payment for the prom DJ that's coming. And I know I, with the, the snowstorm's a week and a half ago, I know a lot of schools, especially in the cities, I believe, I know there were some local schools, too, but had to have their proms rescheduled. How sad to be thinking that in April we had to be doing that. But, I mean, you know, that was quite, quite the event as well, so. But that's all I have, so. Any questions on those? If not, I would make a motion to unanimously approve the wire transfers for 4/6 of 18 to 19 of 18, and payment of the April 24, 2018 bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed us. Thank you. New business, Dan, we have a grant.
Oh, Mr. Bus is not still here. I was gonna say. He, Mr. Bus, the sixth-grade teacher, had applied for a $5,000 Greater Minnesota grant to implementation of new science curriculum that'll be using the next-generation science standards. The money will be used specifically to purchase to purchase and also provide activities that will allow students to work directly with science, technology, and engineering concepts. So, I would make a motion to approve the $5,000 Greater Minnesota Grant for grades 3 through 6 to implement new science curriculum.
Can we roll call?
It's not a resolution.
Okay. Okay, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And Dell. Waiver, continuing contract?
The Staff Welfare Committee reviewed a proposal to allow two teachers to extend their tenure date by one year in lieu of terminating the probationary contracts at the end of the year. Enclosed is a waiver continuing the contracts, which has been signed by both teachers in Appendix A. And I would move to approve those waivers continuing contracts for the two teachers and extending their tenure date by one year.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And back to you, Dan. Phone system?
Yesterday, the operations committee met, and Lee Stewart, our technology man, who's told us now we are, this is the fourth different phone system he will have installed, was it, yeah, over the years.
Fourth or fifth.
We are in need of a new phone system because the one that we have now will no longer be supported after June 30th. So, he went for some proposals. We've got three of them that came back. And the operations committee recommends that we accept the proposal of Frontier. If you notice by looking at the chart in Appendix B, it's actually a pretty significant cut from what we have been paying in the past for things like the E911 and the long-distance calling and voice-over IP, a large part of the communication system now. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve, accepting the quote from Frontier Communications for the new telephone system, including new telephones, just shy of, I believe, 400, he said, for the, throughout the district.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to summer board meeting schedule?
Yes. We have a proposed summer board meeting schedule here in your packet, or was given to you. And as we've done in the last several years, last, I mean, how many years we've been doing this, the recommendation is to just to hold one meeting a month for June and July. That would be a regularly scheduled board meeting night, so June 12th at 5:00 PM, and then July 10th at 5:00 PM. And with that, then, we would cancel the June 26th meeting and also July 24th meeting. And then, hold our 2 August meeting scheduled as things start to rev up again for the next school year. So, I would make a motion to approve the summer 2018 board meeting schedule.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to personnel. Julie, again?
Yes. Medical leave. Lisa Carnell is requesting a medical leave on or about September 9th, extending through the end of the 2018-19 school year. And I then would make a motion to approve that medical leave for Lisa Carnell effective on, on or about September 9th, and extending through the end of the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And back to you, Dell. Employment?
Jim Davison is recommending that Johanna Soderstone be hired as a long-term substitute 6th grade social studies teacher to replace Lisa Carnell while she's on leave next year. Johanna's, holds a 5 to 12 social studies teaching license from the University of Minnesota-Duluth. She has experience teaching in Glendale, Arizona, and most recently, has been serving Fairmont and the surrounding school district as a substitute teacher. With that information and with that recommendation, I would move to improve the employment of Johanna Soderstone as a long-term substitute 6th grade teacher effective for January, effective for the 2018-2019 school year at a salary of BA Step 1.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, we come to board committee reports. We have one. Southern Plains, Julie?
Yes, we met the Southern Plains Educational Cooperative Board. And this was open for all members of the boards, the, not just the membership, voting members of the school, of each school district, but also open to all other board members to attend and then to go into any more detail that we'd like to have done. But with that, we did kind of our normal stuff. We did meeting bills and all that, resignations, hiring and that. But the main reason we had the meeting was to do some discussion on the allocation of building costs of the Lincoln School. We did also, that night, agree to, we don't have anything really in definite as in the purchase. We do have a price. We do have, the purchase agreement was, we just agreed to purchase the building. We'll be purchasing the building for about $10,000. And that will be the complete purchase. The, we will have to clean the building out and get things ready, and then, we can start with our progression of our building project there. We also discussed accommodations for districts with having inadequate lease levy authority if they would need to. There is a clause that'll be in the whole process that will allow us that if we have a year, several years, whatever, how we can handle that if we don't have enough lease levy authority to fund our things. And this building cost will take over a 20-year frame, timeframe. So, other than that, we did approve agreement with ISG as our building architect. I think that's pretty much it. And any other questions or anything anybody would have of that? But like I said, we did come to an agreement to purchase the Lincoln School building that will become the new Southern Plains Educational Cooperative that will include the classrooms. It will include the business office portion of that entity. And that'll start as soon as we can get things moving. So, we will have coming before our board in the future a vote as to the support of that, of that purchase. So, but that'll be coming up. I'm not sure if it'll have that ready for the next meeting or what meeting it will be. But that's coming up in the future.
So... I would imagine that all the other boards in the, in the cooperative have that same vote coming up then, too?
Exactly. But each board meets at a different time. And so, you know, everybody has their own meeting date. And so, it'll come at ours. So, when that comes. And I don't know, Joe Brown, have you, we haven't heard anything as to anybody who has, I mean, this meeting was just last Thursday. So, I'm not sure if we had any boards that, we normally would meet on, like, Monday. So, usually, then, the next month, May, would be when all the meetings would take place for approving that. So... Correct? Okay, sounds good.
Okay, that is the agenda.
Well, we did have operations committee meeting yesterday morning.
Okay.
We just, we had the phone proposal that we talked about here tonight, and a brief update on what Julie just told us about. So, it was a, for an operations committee meeting, it was brief.
Thanks, Dan.
Short and sweet.
And you saved money. How do you beat that?
Okay, so if anyone, if no one has any additional business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.